I just heard that rumor.
There she goes.
Yeah, it's probably Maurice.
Mr. Man, I've got to adjust this microphone. I'd like to call to order the city council work agenda on Monday, June 20th. It's now 5:00 PM. Just a reminder and remind me also, there's a special meeting tonight immediately following the work session. We're all present today. Isn't that nice? We're all here. That's great to see everybody. Yeah. We have one item on the agenda, and I would like to remind council to refrain once more from asking question until they finish the staff presentation. So, staff will present a conceptual blueprint of the West Goodyear and City Center Bullard-Wash focus areas, seeking council's input and policy direction for potential projects. And I'll read this before we start. Following staff will present Development Services Director, Chris Baker; Planning Manager, Katie Wilken; Wilken; Planner 3, Steve Caretti; Planner 3, Karen Craver; Planner 2, Alex Listinsky; and Long Range Planner, Joe Schmidt. Do you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. As you're aware, our, the staff in what we call GMC, which is right next door, which comprises Economic Development, Engineering, and Development Services began implementing lean in the fall of 2015. And as a result of those efforts, communications in our building, in our departments, and in between our departments has dramatically increased. And part of that communication improvement also includes what we call an idea board, which is simply a big sticky like that, that's in our respective divisions, that when staff has an idea, and it doesn't matter when it is, they just simply jot it down and put it on this idea board. So, back in late fall, early winter, their planning staff began to put some stickies up on the idea board. Stickies that said, "Think about the big picture. Planning is passion. What are we doing for the community in the long run? Are we creating communities? Are we enhancing the value of Goodyear?" Those type of questions and ideas, rhetorical questions that were stuck on the sticky board. And so, the ideas posted by staff clearly showed that the planning staff have and has a lot of passion and creativity. It was just kind of hidden a little bit below the surface. So, what we wanted to do was create an opportunity for these ideas and creativity to bubble up, and we did just that. Several weeks ago, we were very fortunate to be able to take two days as a team together, free of distractions in the city, and we collaborated on two different projects. And so, what, the purpose of it was, is to get these amazingly talented and creative staff people the opportunity to think about the impacts that they can have in the short term and the long term for our community. So Katie and I challenged them, the planners, to work in two teams, and to also think, broke, broke up into two different teams to focus on two different projects. The West Goodyear project, Mayor, you alluded to, and the Bullard-Wash City Center area. We asked the planners to be creative and to focus on ideas that have meaning and are actionable, and they did just that. And they made a great deal of progress, and we're really excited about the conversation that we're going to have with you tonight. So Katie?
Thank you, Christopher. So one thing I wanted to comment on is, obviously, you guys are in a very different configuration than you normally are.
What do you mean?
And we just wanted to thank you for trying something different with us. When it was suggested that we come to you with this, at first, we started thinking, oh, let's put together a PowerPoint and put together a more formal presentation. But we realized, what was really exciting about what we put together was, we had this really great discussion with some of our leadership team members, and that's what we wanted to do with you today, is often, we're bringing to you a finalized product that you're just reacting to, and we don't get the chance to just sit down and have a conversation with you about the vision and future of Goodyear. So again, you know, just thanks for trying something different. You know, this may or may not work, but we just appreciate you guys hanging in there with us and trying something different. The other thing I wanted to talk to you a little bit about is what areas we chose. So Christopher and I actually sat down, kind of brainstorming, all right, what, what are the areas we're going to focus on? And we had ideas all the way from, you know, let's have six different projects, and then we realized, no, we need to narrow that focus. But when we started looking at things like where future CIP projects are going to be, the applications we're getting in in our department, it really became apparent that there's kind of two areas for us to look at. One of them is the West Goodyear area, because of everything happening there, but there's also a lot of CIP projects, the 303 project coming through. There's just a lot happening and a lot of potential. And it's an area that staff is very interested in visioning for the future, because we are getting a lot of requests from developers for changes to the area. The other is around the City Center area, and that's because, you know, we have the 100-acre park, the Recreation Center, the Bullard-Wash, the ballpark. We have projects like Community Southwest, looking at the ballpark area. There's just a lot happening in that area for us to start talking about, how do these things interconnect? What do we maybe need to revisit? So first up, Steve and Alex are going to talk to you about the West Goodyear area. To set it up just a little bit, there's, this area is really different than maybe other areas throughout the valley, in that there's a lot of smaller developments. Some of the, you know, we've, we've heard you guys talk about things like, you know, we want hip and cool areas, we want something different, we want to add diversity. And a lot of communities out there that have done that successfully had some large master developer leading the charge, like Agratopia, DC Ranch, Verado, all those places that we think are really cool. In this area, it's a little different. We don't have a master developer, like we do in Estrella, where Newland is really taking care of that area, really bringing a lot of quality, they can quickly learn from things and adjust accordingly. We have a really good relationship with them. In the West Goodyear area, we have all these individual areas. So if we want to do something different, if we want to see something really cool, I think the city is going to have to take a new role in the development of that area that maybe we haven't done before. And that doesn't necessarily mean spending a lot of money. So I wanted to set that up with, that's kind of what we were looking at, at the approach in this area, is the opportunities, and also what, what does the city role, city's role need to be to see what you guys want to see happen in this area?
Thank you, Katie. Council members, this is so exciting and so fun. So Steve and I got tasked with West Goodyear, and I'll be honest, we took the site visit in the morning, and we drove through West Goodyear, and Steve and I just looked at each other, and we're like, "West Goodyear. What, what can we do to make West Goodyear a place? We want to, we're placemakers. We learned it in school, we want to, we want to build a community." And working with Goodyear, we have a lot of communities that we're really proud of. We have Estrella, Palm Valley, Katie mentioned a bunch of them, Canyon Trails. And West Goodyear, like Katie said, is divided up into a lot of different communities. We do have a lot of the existing PADS that are zoned already, are entitled already out there. So we have La Privada, Paseo Place, Perdara, a lot of these you've seen recently come through with the Development Agreement amendments. And so, looking at that, and then taking into consideration, there's a lot of county islands out there as well. It does border Buckeye, and so there's a lot of properties that have been there for a long time, that we, maybe someday we'll, we'll annex them in, but right now, we don't want to offend them or, or make any changes to what they have already. So, as Steve and I kind of were brainstorming our ideas, we just, we took what's out there already, we took the county properties, and thought, we need our own little agratopia, our own little agro-hood is the trend, the trending term right now, where you kind of incorporate a small suburb or neighborhood and add agriculture to it, kind of be a little bit more loose on the, the standards for development, not necessarily giant acres on every lot, but maybe allow some chickens in the backyard, and allow some farming, and just agriculture in general. So we, we took that, and then we just ran with it, and what could we do, and how can we make these already entitled properties develop the way we want to see this property, or this site of Goodyear develop? So one of the first things I wanted to bring up is, we call it West Goodyear, but our idea, our vision for it, is we need a name. So one of the things we came up with, that I'll just use today, it doesn't have to be, if this does move forward, it doesn't have to be the name, but we came up with The Arbers. We went to Los Barises, and, which is super nice. They have the grapevines, and they have a lot of different trellises and everything, and it, it's something that we, it's already there, and we can kind of work off of that. And so, maybe in the future, when we continue developing these, it can be Perdara at The Arbers, or, you know, give it a kind of Estrella feel, or Palm Valley, which we've already developed off of a lot. And so, I'm going to pull out this little map that we drew out, and this will overlay on our West Goodyear properties. And so, excuse me, so this yellow street right here is-
You need some water.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm good. I have some down here, thank you.
Okay. Take a sip when you need it, it's okay.
Um, so we, we do have Citrus Road highlighted, and Citrus Road is one of our, in our CIP, I don't think at the moment, and someone, please step in if I'm speaking, but it's something that we do have control of. There is, like I said, a lot of bordering Maricopa County island, islands over there, so some of it we can't touch, but we do have the opportunity to build off of that agro, agro-hood theme, and hopefully persuade the, the current developers to move in that direction as far as theming and, and developing with, in accordance with our agro, or The Arbers. So we have some existing pictures that we'll put on Elmo. So this one is right coming off of the 10, off Citrus Road, and we do have the RID canal there. So that's really an entrance point that we've labeled on this map up here. And one of the major thing, things of theming the, of Citrus Road, was to have some sort of monument, to like, you've arrived in West Goodyear, or The Arbers, I'm going to keep saying West Goodyear, I can't even remember my own theme. And so-
That's okay. Call it The Arbers.
So to develop The Arbers, we'd have that, "Welcome to The Arbers. You've arrived." You know, Estrella's working on some improvements to their entry, entry points, to just make a sense of arrival. And then the other asterisks on our map show future entry features as well. And so this is one of, I think, the county islands that are out there, and there's a lot of tractors. We have a lot of open space and dirt right now, which, as Steve and I actually drove out there today, and we're like, how, it, it looks so empty, but it's, there's so much entitlement out there already, and it's, it's, we're right on the cusp of breaking through in, in The Arbers and West Goodyear. So Steve's scrolling through these pictures, and then I'll pass it over to him, to kind of start talking about really diving into what our theming's going to be, and kind of our movement on towards making The Arbers happen.
Mayor, council, we looked at Citrus Road, as you notice, that's kind of the area. In our West Goodyear area, this is what we focused on, Citrus Road. And we did that, uh, can I?
This? Oh, pointer?
And we did Citrus Road because we had boundaries here. We have I-10, and then we have down here, future 303, we have a railroad, we have kind of a built-in area that we could focus on. And what Alex and I looked at was, let's look at Citrus Road for what we want to do with this vision for this agro-hood type of area. And, and you saw some of the pictures there, infrastructure, it's a blank slate. There's the paper entitlement, but right now, it's a blank slate. It's just two-lane farm roads, basically. So this was the area that we decided to focus on, and in doing this, we, with the agro-hood design, you might get the impression that it's a rural type of development. And what we found was that it really isn't. You can have agricultural theme and a very dense development. So in looking out there, we were like, we don't really have to touch any of the entitlements that have already been given out there. We can do this within the existing approvals that have already been done. And you have a wider range of uses, the agricultural type of uses here with these next few pictures. And some of these are local, some of these are agratopia, some of these are from across the country. So this is a trend we're seeing, it's becoming more and more popular, like, like Alex said, was it farm-to-table?
Farm-to-table.
Is becoming more and more important. People want the fresh food. And this is right here in Queen Creek, the Olive Mill.
What's it called? I'm sorry?
The Olive Mill. And kind of like what Alex said, people, we get calls, people want chickens, they want the fresh eggs. And what we were thinking of with this, our Arbers, our focus on Citrus Road would be, what could we do to make this vision happen? And what can we, as a city, influence? And right now, one of the things we focused on was the, the right-of-way, Citrus Road right-of-way, it's a blank slate right now. And in terms of standards, it would likely be developed as a arterial, five-lane arterial, you know, what could we do differently? One of those might be, you know, traffic signals. Can you go with a different traffic signal to convey a different theme? City has control over this type of infrastructure. The right-of-way width doesn't necessarily have to be five lanes. With Citrus Road bounded on the north and south, is it going to move that much traffic? Can we reduce the section to maybe a more rural section, maybe a more collector section? That is something that we, as a city, feel that we control, and that if we do this, maybe the developers will find that attractive with the infrastructure in the area. We set the theme. If others come in and say, "Wow, look what Goodyear's doing, we want to be a part of that," they carry the theme. And again, part of that theme is, you know, agricultural right up to the homes. It's mixed right in to the developments.
I do want to mention, oh, sorry, Katie. We also did pick Citrus too, because a lot of the current zoning does call for commercial right up against Citrus Road. And so if we do change a little bit of the standards in commercial development, maybe we can include some open-air markets where the local farmers can sell their produce, maybe add some food truck lots that we can utilize, and those kind of standards to allow for them, and just really hopefully spur some great development, and interesting development out there.
I wanted to jump in real quick, too. What was really getting us excited about this idea of focusing on Citrus and some of the other infrastructure too, is this could actually mean a real cost savings to the developer. I think that the last traffic signal we did was around $600,000 almost. So if we look at a cheaper traffic signal, things like, you know, if we had DG paths on one side of the road instead of a sidewalk, like the Murphy Bridle Trail, if you're familiar with that, that's cheaper. So maybe certain products all of a sudden pencil out differently, because we were able to change our infrastructure. So it's not also, not just creating a theme, but it's also creating some opportunities to partner with the development community to make things work that maybe couldn't work out before.
And again, just showing you that this doesn't mean rural, it doesn't mean the one-acre lots. We are looking and seeing that these are kind of typical single-family densities that, you know, developers can get the density they're looking for, but also promote these new themes that we're seeing. And with the right-of-way, you know, we could do all kinds of different things, you know, over, like Alex said, The Arbers, some of this was kind of, are the influences for us. You know, and for developers, you know, for a few, and we have roughly 6,000 lots out there. We're not thinking that all 6,000 are going to, maybe somebody comes in and says, "This is great." Agratopia's like 160 acres, so you don't need all this area, all these square miles to develop, just a few. If a few wanted to come onboard, maybe get a theme going, and, you know, you start getting to a little diversity of housing styles within the city. It can get really interesting. You know, you can bring a lot of it, a lot of the agricultural theme right next to your houses, and people are paying premiums to live in communities like this. And it was fun doing the research, because you're seeing other places across the country doing this, and successful, and creating that sense of place and community that people are really enjoying, and they're getting able to do this in their front yards. And that's where, in terms of infrastructure, the right-of-way, that's something that we can control. We can also work with developers, should they want to do this, with, say, they come in for a PD amendment to make all this kind of conforming to their PAD. If they want chickens, great, if they want small animals, great. That's something, we do have agricultural areas in Goodyear, but maybe not something like this, you know, where you can have animals and a community farm, or, you know, right on your own law.
So I guess we can kind of jump into maybe what kind of next steps we can take. We've talked about a lot of them, as far as infrastructure improvements, using the CIP, some overlays, zoning ordinance amendments, PAD amendments. And a lot of it is going to be part, like everyone, or like Katie and Steve said, partnering with those developers that are out there right now. And so, we have just, I've specifically been really freaking out about this idea of making charrettes with developers, and what do they want to see, and how can we get them excited? Because a lot of them have been, have, have been sitting on this property for many, many years, and haven't been able to develop it. So how can we get them excited again, and get them wanting to put the money in, to invest in the infrastructure, and maybe make it more affordable for them, as Katie said? And then we can really grow with this theme, and make it, make it profitable for Goodyear and them, and the few, all future residents of being excited to live where they live.
And what, again, it's, we, what staff is often faced with is, by the time the developer comes to the city to talk about a project, they already have it engineered. They already have the lots laid out, and it becomes very expensive to make even sometimes minor comments that could make a big impact on a project. So that's why we love this idea of, you know, let's be, and this is what I was talking about, where maybe the city needs to take a new role, of just reaching out to the development community and saying, "How do we do something like this? How do we get you now, before you've spent the money engineering your project, and work together? What is it you would need to get these projects to pencil out? What is it, you know, you, we, we can do that you'd be okay with? What can we do with our infrastructure that would take this theme?" So it'd be a new approach to planning and development that maybe we just haven't done before, but we're really excited about try, maybe trying some of these things out.
So I guess we'd like to open up the conversation now.
All right, that sounds good. Who would like to start? Are you all stunned?
I can start. She can start.
I, I can start.
Go ahead, Joanne.
Well, my FFA daughter would be thrilled. She would be completely thrilled. And, you know, congratulations, guys. You, you really were using your imaginations, and you were researching places that, and I, I'm sorry, I love this agro-hood, I think that's, that's wonderful. A couple of things that kind of came to my mind as you tried to talk to developers about this, you know, I know how, in Phoenix, you have areas that, you know, we all taught, the Arcadia area, and the Maryvale area, and you, you have all these areas that they kind of take their own, you know, names on, Palm Valley does, we all, they, and they do, right. I think that's something that could also be highlighted in this, as you change maybe the scope of the traffic signals or things like that, is maybe the street signs have that, The Arbers above it. You know, maybe there's something that gives it that, rather than, I, I hate to have us not have the welcoming sign of that this is still Goodyear, because we don't want to get back into that, we, we are still all Goodyear, we don't want to still be that, "Oh, well, I'm The Arbers, so I'm Palm Valley, I'm public..." You know, we still want it to be Goodyear, but if you have those little, you know, street signs that say that. I think the other thing that's a win-win here, because I know that it has been years and years and years that we've tried to help the residents of the county islands annex. And I, and I remember the last attempt, there was the concern that their lifestyle would have to change. This is a way to help, you know, protect their lifestyle, and yet, the people that still want to live that kind of life, you know, we know Seattle people love this kind of, I mean, there's many places across the nation that love this. And so, I think that would be a win-win for, I, I bet that would, this would be the kind of help in the right direction for our county islands of saying, "You know what? You finally get the protection for us." The, the other thing too, is that some of these things, we all talk about the heat island effect, and this is another way to accomplish, you know, not having that type of atmosphere. So I'm, I'm excited about it, and I'm sure that there's, I think your charrette idea is, is a proactive way to get in front of them, prior to them going out and doing all their plans, and then they go, "Oh, well, why didn't you come to us with that creativity beforehand?" You know, so, so, very good.
I'm going to just interject, I'll go and answer.
No, no, go ahead.
Interject something for that call on another council person. Duncan Farms, it was extremely successful when we arrived. It would be packed when we take our grandchildren there. And if you look at those buildings that are still left, some of those buildings, there might be something there even that you could salvage, salvage, I don't know, but-
The big baby.
Yeah, the big baby. But, so, so I guess in my estimation, we know that, that we know that the community could thrive, because that one did. All right, Sherry?
Can, I'm sorry, Mayor, can I just interac, interject? I wanted just to ask you, Councilmember Osborne, what you thought, you mentioned your daughters in FAA. Did you, do you think that the younger generation is more into this? Because that's what some of our discussions, we were getting excited, that, you know, it just seems like sustainability, this farm life is just kind of, it's not just a trend, it's kind of the future? And I'm just wondering what your take on that is.
Well, I was amazed to see when Auburn was in FFA, when they would go off to the conventions, and the 50,000 teenagers that were there on their blue jackets was incredible. And that, and U of A is, that is the ag school, and that is where so many of these kids still believe in that type of, and, and they research it, and they, well, her degree is agribusiness. And so, I mean, this is something big, so I do hear a lot about this. But then I also have the teens that I've, I've mentored over the years that are in Portland, that love Seattle, that are in, you know, I mean, that is, they're still, because they are that, oh, I hate to call them the urban redneck, but they are into, they are the agro-hood. I mean, those are the things that, you know, they do appreciate, the natural things and the community gardens. Those are, those are, are important. And anything that you research, as in blue zones, I don't know, that, that hasn't been used in a while, but blue zones are the areas in the world that, that have the happiest, longest-living people, and they all have some kind of garden with them, whether it's their own village garden, their community garden, or it's, you know, something like that. So I, I think those are important things.
In the community garden, I think you hit on that, and in the, I think a lot of communities haven't really got it right. You know, they get excited about it, and then people don't want to maintain it, but with Duncan Family Farms, like you said, and then when we brought it to leadership team, we even learned that CrossFit Fury is trying to do, what was it, Fury Farm?
Well, there's the Garcia Farm out here too, that's really large, and-
It's, it's like there's potential partnerships, maybe, that could really-
Does bring ASU in it too.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Now, it won't look like that right now in, you know, 117-degree weather, but it's, it's good.
Yeah. Sherry?
It could look like that in 117-degree weather, you'd just have to pick the right produce. I, I, first of all, I'm very excited seeing how excited you all are about it, and how creativity just is, is coming out, looking at all the options and all the ideas. So I am very, very impressed with this, and I think it would be a great thing that the builders would love to see. You asked about kids. I know, it, it is something more that the, the kids know, I guess, that I've got younger kids than Joanne's, that- got younger kids than Joanne's, that they are interested in farmers markets. When we go someplace, we stop at a farmer's market and get the fresh produce. And a lot of the schools tried community gardens, but didn't really have the soil to do that. This is going to have great soil, the great opportunity. So I think it's something that a lot of families are going to look for because right now, not just Goodyear, but a lot of the valley, it's brown stucco, brown stucco tile. I liked that you were looking at craftsman houses. You were looking at different colors. Because I know there's a lot of people out there that when they're looking for houses, they're going to some of the older neighborhoods or like the Groves and Mesa or someplace that's not just your regular tract housing. So there are so many places that, this is kind of almost old time Arizona, I want to say. You know, if you look at some of the old farming areas where some of the houses and the old main streets, I think you're bringing back a little nostalgia. I like the idea of the bridle path. I was just wondering if there's any way we can incorporate, obviously with a bridle path, the canals into it more and what that would take, you know? Because it'd be great if we could have boats on it, but I doubt they'll let us do that, but, you know.
Have benches or walking area?
Well, like Venice, California, where they have the little boats that go back and forth in the canals.
That'd be great.
Hey, if we're thinking outside the box, I'm way outside this box here. But it's if we could incorporate the water and the trails into that as a cooling effect, I think that would be great. So I like the variety of houses. I think the more variety is going to sell. Because people are just really looking for something new. And there really isn't that option in Goodyear. And really, most of the valley, you've got to really look at some of the older neighborhoods to look for that, this kind of lifestyle with the cooling and the grass and not the rocks and not the, I mean, I think it's great. And even if you're not a farmer per se, maybe you don't want the chickens. A lot of people are going to want to have some gardening and stuff. So I think it's absolutely wonderful.
Next, Cheryl Lynn?
What is the ground like in that area? I mean, is it potential, I mean, I know at Indian School and Cotton, the growth was possible, product was possible, but what is the dirt like, excuse me, in this area? How, is this even feasible?
No, great question. That's something we definitely have to explore more. Since there's existing farming out there, you know, we kind of went under the assumption that there's something about the soil, but certainly there might be a big difference in growing cotton versus growing food. But, you know, that's definitely something that might be first up to explore.
Joe?
You know, I like diversity in themes. You know, I had the opportunity the other day, my, one of my daughter laws was in a dance recital, saw Steve there, and I got an opportunity to go through Verado. I'm not impressed a whole lot with housing stock, but I was impressed going through Verado. From the quality standpoint, when you look at the small lots, the diversity. And again, if the market will support it and with this theme, I don't have a problem with it because I like the diversity of having a different look than just stucco, the front. You know, I like to be able to go down the street in a neighborhood where I don't have to watch the numbers to see what house it is. Alls I can do is get a description while mine has a gate. That's one reason why I bought where I bought, because I can't actually give a description and don't have to give my house number. But that I like to see. And, you know, even with this product, if it will sell to fit in there, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure whatever we come up with, whether it's signs or the lights, we still maintain a quality product, whatever we come up with. And whatever you think will work from a theme standpoint, I'm all in. Because again, I like the variety. You know, that's the one thing that I don't want us to have happen when we start to get into smaller lots, where you go down the street and everything looks the same except, you know, front address might change here, might be shifted over here, different color patterns, but it's basically the same thing. So again, anything that breaks that up and has a theme that draws people to the area, I'm on board.
Bill, you have anything to say?
I'm just trying to process it all. I don't have any objection at all to the whole process. And I think it's a really, it's a really unique concept. So the creative side of my brain is working one way and then the logical side is, it's 117 out. I'm looking at this, Portland and Seattle are great places, but man, it's 75 degrees there all year long, so you can do a lot more than we can here. So I don't want to be, I don't want to be negative with that because I think the concepts of doing something different. The bigger concern I think that I do have, we're talking about limiting this to this particular area between using citrus as the center divider, if you will. That should be Perryville to the west and Cotton to the east. So we're going to create a, basically a strip area, you know, bounded north by I-10 and south by 303. Is that, if I got those boundaries right? That will potentially be completely different. And I think that's probably the, that's the goal. But we could create an area that is so completely different that it becomes an island unto itself and now they're completely disconnected. That's the part that I'm, that I'm having logically a difficult time getting, which is why I've been relatively quiet, but since you put me on the spot there.
I wanted to do that. I saw your face, so I knew there was something going on.
Yeah, I was thinking and I.
But think about this, think about some of these areas will be, for those people, it will be introducing them to something new. It will be a family event. It will create a whole atmosphere that we don't have now. And I think it will show the creativity of our city. I think it's, we have an opportunity in that side and would be nice that once this idea is out and it's sort of, we have somewhat our arms around it, that the developers that are developing now that want to build may look at a little bit different design on the home. They may, they may come up with something. I don't know. But look, I'm going to tell you, I grew up in the country, no water, no running water, no electricity, and we had a garden up on the hill. And everybody in the neighborhood had gardens up there. And it was a social event when you went up there. And, and so it does give a different atmosphere to it. And it, I think it brings up the quality of life. And so I agree with you throughout the areas. And how many times have we had people come to us and want gardens in their backyard? I can tell you Pebble Creek tried so hard for Mr. Robeson to find an area where they could have a garden. And not only that, I think, Joe, they came to us at one time, they were looking for a spot that we could use for a garden. So there's something very homespun and, and, you know, we've hit the epitome of modern life now. And I think people are yearning to a little bit of some things that they read that their parents did and where they lived. And you go with that feeling, you go through Verado, that's what it is. When you drive through Verado and some of those neighborhoods, I mean, I get this great feeling about where I was raised and it just gives you that homey feeling and those porches and.
And you want to raise your children.
You just want to go knock upon the door and say, can I sit on your porch? You know, I mean, it really does do that. And I think that's what we're looking for now. And like you say, Joe, a lot of that though, if you look really close, some of it's stucco, but they have ways with the stucco to make it not look like stucco and give you the same, same view. Because we do have heat and we have building limitations on what products. But I, I'm, but the thing that always as a salesperson, I say, we have to build what's in it for the developer. And we have to have those precise. And if you're going to do something like that, there really needs to be some financial part in it for them. You've got to create, first of all, create the excitement of what you feel that this is going to go and have all the facts there about around the country, what's happening and the age groups it's happening to, who's doing it? So really research it. But to me, before you introduce anything, you want to start with factual things that you can say them to incentivize them to want to put this extra effort in. Because it's extra effort, because when you, when you hire teams to build homes, put one there and you say, okay, you go down 50 homes and you put that one piece on there. And then there's someone go, well, next week we're going to put that on. So when you do this type of thing, then you are, the timeframe in which a house is built is a little bit longer, in my view.
Do you mind, oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to respond to what Councilmember Stip said because I completely agree with you. And like, I love Verado, but I don't connect Verado to Buckeye, you know? And I don't think most people do that. And that's exactly what we don't want to do. So, and obviously you might not be able to think of something off the top of your head, but, and we would love to keep this conversation going. But if you can think of places that you think have done it right, where there's like this unique identity for a neighborhood, but you still know I'm in Phoenix or I'm in Tempe. You know, we'd love to hear those examples so we can go figure out, well, what, how did they do it? Because it's hard, I think it's a hard thing to do, what you're describing.
They have put wine vineyards in there. You know, so they're, Verado, you know, they were looking up at the club. So as you go up to the club, you look down that hill. And then they also have a picnic table up there, kind of just off the side of the road. As you go up there with a cover on it, you know? So again, shielded by sun, so for the, from the sun. So if you start looking through their little places that they bring greenery or that look, and even in the entryway coming into where the club is, start looking around in some of those areas. You're going to see it. And as far as, does it, does it blend with Buckeye? Yeah, because what's going to happen is the old Buckeye is going to be their, their, their city like our, our area is, is a Goodyear, historical Goodyear. That's going to be their, that's because the demand now is not for exactly like their, their hometown is, I call it the original hometown, and it is there. So the market has changed. So if you went on that premise, you'd never do anything and you just keep going modern, keep going the direction you're going. But I think if you give people a chance to, and it would be nice to show this to the public. Bring a group in and get the public opinion of what they feel like this. When you finally get to the point where you can, you know, introduce this.
I'd like to dovetail.
Like, you know, like we did for the city center, we did a charrette. And, and you could do a mini charrette that wouldn't cost a huge amount of money and bring people out and let them, let them decide.
If I could just, as Christopher says, dovetail on what Katie's saying. We did, it went through our minds so many times. And I think Councilmember Osborne brought it up too about trying not to make it a, the arbors where it's kind of, you're forgetting that we are in Goodyear. And we had several different conversations about it. And it is right, that border between Buckeye and Goodyear. And it is hard to find a way to blend the two together where we don't want to be, we're in Buckeye or we're in a completely different environment. And so we did want to bring the branding into that, to Perryville. And I, this is my lovely drawing that, I don't know if you guys all saw, I did the logo. But that was something that we were considering where we didn't want to, we didn't, we want something different, but we want to still maintain some, that heart of Goodyear into West Goodyear.
Actually, we do have a community that's doing that, and that's your community.
Australia is.
Australia, I mean, when you say, when you say, is that Goodyear? No, it's not. When you go up there and you see the Stargazer and you see the trees and you see what they're doing down the hill, no, Newland's not trying to do that. And if you look at their new club that's going to be opening up, it's totally different than the Starpoint is. So no, they're definitely different. So I, so I don't think difference like that, you know, you talk about boring, boring. All I see is beige homes. And then when it comes to a point of really reaching out, you kind of draw back and say, well, I don't know if we can do that. Well, I don't know. You can. Home market is marketing. And this couldn't be marketed. And that's what you're looking for when you grow your city. And this might catch on for the other, other developers that still have land of trying to do something a little bit different then. We've got to be flexible and it may be work on our part.
And Mayor, you asked about, or somebody asked about what you can grow. And I used to live in Australia Vista, I'm sorry, at the bottom of the hill. And I had, this is what I had in my backyard, just in my planters, because it was farm soil. Everything from grapes, and they got good size, to thyme, to rosemary. I had carrots, radishes, I had a little garden back there, you know? Well, the fence, of course, you know, but it does grow and it's just the timing. So I think those visions are doable here.
My rose bushes have bloomed four times. And even in this hot weather, I see they're really primed. Give me a couple more flowers on them.
Keep the birds away.
So I mean, yeah.
I think also that looking at what is currently there, this is the perfect way to, to transition all of it together. And I, and I think that was very creative that you did it in that way. So good on you guys. That was good.
Yes. And I speak now? Wally, you haven't spoken. I'm sorry, Wally.
I've tried a couple of times, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You got to stand up.
It's all right. It's okay. I think it's a great idea. I just don't know how the people that are there are going to accept it, even if we promise them we're going to protect them. And, because we have an issue right now.
You mean protect them? Tell me what you.
Well, they're in the county island and we're not going to take their, their quality of life of having the John Deere tractor in the middle of their front yard.
Actually, that, actually, when I saw that picture, I said, whoa, we'd pay money. Money to, to market this.
Yeah, so we're not going to, I mean, I don't know how that'll work out. And I can see that, you know, we need to have a lot of conversation. And we need to have a lot of conversation of how we're going to cover them with police and fire since they're a county island and they're all around there. And we don't even know where the county islands are. And how is this going to be in conjunction with whatever else is planned? Or is this going to be so far out that the other, far out in design, not far out, out? Far out in farming design? Okay, sorry, that it's really not compatible with the other. But I think it's really a very interesting thing. I hope you can find some developers that are interested in this sort of thing. Because if we're going to grow, well, even with this, we would have to change some of our design guidelines and our colors.
Would it have an overlay? Is that what you do with this?
And all of this. So unless we are willing to change some of the things in the way we do it, we're going to be passed by again.
Well, we did, when I mentioned that, I'm sorry for interrupting you. I apologize. But that's what an overlay is for. We can make those changes. And that's what will make it different. And that's why it will protect us from the people surrounding us complaining and criticizing because you're doing that. And I think if you develop your city worrying about the county islands, you'll never develop. You got to, you know, what you, what you hope to do, and in this case, it would be, I mean, if they're worried about their horses and their chickens, all of a sudden they see a new modern area built with chickens in it, it's sort of.
This is a good transition.
It's a good transition. And we did, we really had a little bit of this up at Mobile. Remember, Joe, the time we spent? Because we had meeting after meeting about their livestock and where they're going to be able to have them, if they could have them, because some of them wanted their horses in the front yard. And so we had to make compromises. But it was a good plan when they finished and people were happy with it. And that was going to have modern homes up in that area. And so it would have been very close and the, and the buildings would have been. It's again, I think, communication with the people and you bring them in for the charrette and you keep them part of it. And I think if they know you're doing anything agriculture, they'll be thrilled. So that's my personal opinion.
It's not open range. The cows aren't going to run around.
Anybody else here or staff?
We've already been through that part, yeah.
Is there any, anything else you want of us? Where are we at now? Is there anything?
We're done with this first area.
Okay, so now go to the next.
So.
I'm with the arbors.
So they're going to take this part and then Joe and Karen are going to come up again. They're going to be talking about the city center, Bullard Wash Development Complex, general area.
So that was their assignment?
Yes, that, their team, city center.
Adam?
You're dead.
Are you breaking them all?
Why don't you turn it on before you give them? In case it's something he's.
Oh, you don't.
Oh, now it's flashing. That's not good. Yeah, somebody else turn it on. Don't touch it. She's got it on.
Don't touch anything too.
Okay, so first off, let me say thank you for the opportunity to share the work we did in our advance. It was interesting and enjoyable. And at the same time, I think we came up. hope you share some of those feelings with us, and, and share your ideas and responses to it with us, so that we can make sure we take it all into consideration and make it a, a better product. I'm going to cover kind of the technical side of some of the background first, and then I'm going to turn it over to Karen to walk through the vision. But basically, our area was bounded on the north by Van Buren, and Bullard Avenue to the east, Elwood and the new Bullard Avenue to the south area, and then the, about midway between Estraya Parkway and Saraval on the west. And it was selected because a large portion of this area, although it's smack dab in the middle of the city, is largely undeveloped. And so there's a great opportunity to influence how the area continues to develop.
Over that one more time for me, please.
Okay, on the north was more or less Van Buren, and then on the west, east, was Bullard Avenue, more or less, and then Bullard, Elwood on the south, and then roughly about midway between Estraya Parkway and Saraval, which is off the map. So with the changes in the local economy and the national economy, the improvements that we're seeing, we're starting to see, you know, obviously renewed interest in this area. And, but the first thing we did, we wanted to establish that there are some existing developments that are somewhat like constraints, they're not going to change right away, and we don't, we're not proposing to change them. So there's things like, you know, let this area borders up against the airport, which is a, a huge opportunity for the area, and it's not going to go anywhere. But, and it has influences that we want to take into consideration at the same time. The Estraya Vista development that Councilmember Osborne just mentioned, or Vice Mayor Lartano just mentioned, I'm sorry, just looking at your name thing. You know, we're not going to propose any major changes or redevelopment of that area, so that's, that's there. We've got Desert Edge High School and the Basis High School located there, Wildflower Subdivision up here on the northwest corner, and then of course, the Centerra Development here in the middle of the, of the northern border. But then we still have a lot of undeveloped land in the city center itself, and then east of the city center. One of the first things that occurred to us in looking at this area was, after considering some of the constraints, was that every city has a great park that they can point to. And obviously, Lincoln Park in Chicago has 1,200 acres, Central Park in New York has 840 acres. Those are, are large, large parks. But on a smaller scale, Cabanas Park in Tempe is 125 acres, that's the park that's around the lake. Rio Vista Park in Peoria is 54 acres. And then there are several large parks in, in Phoenix, like the Steel Indian School Park, which is 75 acres. Encanto Park is probably about the same size. So we have just shy of 100 acres, now with the Basis School, that's about 11 acres. So we have about 85 acres left. That's a good size parcel of land to develop as a central park and a focal point for the community. So our initial thought was that the, the, there should be an emphasis on developing the park site. And we know that we have, in the CIP now, the Aquatic Center and the Recreation Center, so that presents an opportunity where there's actually funds being programmed to develop this area, and that can serve as a kickoff point for additional development in the city center area. It's also an opportunity to create some recreation space, too. And, you know, the exact design and layout of this has not been set yet. And, but that's going to be coming along, so it's something to consider, and it's really an opportunity for, for the community. And in addition, we still have the 30 acres of the city center site, where City Hall can potentially be located in the future, in a library, and, and maybe that's a better place for a startup university than on, on the park site. So, but we still have land available to us that we control, we own, that we can influence its development. In addition, as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of vacant land within this area, and I think at one point during this general plan process, one of the plan committee members had mentioned that if you look at that area, there's roughly like 1,800 acres of undeveloped land. I mean, that's a huge amount of land. When you think about it in the context of other developments in the valley that are destination locations, it doesn't take nearly that amount of acreage to be, have a significant destination. Kirland Commons, which everybody likes to talk about, is only about 25 to 30 acres itself. The area around Sky Harbor that's developed with office complexes and such is about 300 acres. And then Mill Avenue, obviously a popular destination in Tempe, is only about 120 acres. So we have not really a huge opportunity to create a destination place within the amount of undeveloped acreage that we already have. Now, a lot of this acreage, we have a lot of this acreage, particularly in the eastern area and along Bullard Avenue, because of the airport. And it's, it's been a good planning practice not to have residential uses in proximity to the airport, if you can avoid it. But outside of that area, there still is a lot of opportunity for residential development that maybe we didn't consider as much. When ULI came in and looked at the city center area, one of the comments that they made was, was planned with too much commercial property, and that regional commercial should be concentrated at the regional mall or other power centers, and that, that this probably would not be a regional commercial center. So again, the point being, we have an opportunity to rethink some of these planned land uses, and we can make an impact on a lot smaller acreage than the acreage we have available, so the opportunity is, is great. At this point, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Karen, and she's going to discuss the proposed vision that we came up with, and I'll be manning the Elmo.
Thanks, Joe.
If I don't knock it.
Don't touch the button.
Electric source.
In keeping in line with what ULI said about the land uses in this area, Community Southwest are a professional development company, they get that there isn't a market for the mid and high-rise office space that was approved down there by the, by the development complexes. So they're going to be coming in shortly with a PAD amendment that will change those office uses to residential. So they understand that more people living in this area will entice commercial development that we would like to happen around our ballpark property. And in keeping with then ULI and Community Southwest, we are suggesting that we work with Sun M.P., who has these other three quadrants of the city center. And we would want to work with them to see if we could change their approved uses or add to their approved uses of office and business park and hospitality, to change that to high density as well. Again, we're trying to bring more people into this area.
Can we have Elmo, please?
This, this is the type of development that Community Southwest has, their architect has done here in the valley, and so that's, you know, we can expect similar things, we can expect some even edgier things. What we'd like to talk to Sun M.P. about, because we want this to probably be the higher density, is something like this. This is, I believe, in Philadelphia or Austin, we've got some different examples from. But again, high-density residential, some support commercial right there along Yuma Road, cafes, coffee shops, dry cleaners, businesses that are going to cater specifically to those residents living there. We'd also like to suggest that access to these quadrants and city center be off of Goodyear Boulevard. That way, it can keep whatever traffic is trying to flow up and down Estraya Parkway flowing. We don't need a bunch of additional driveways off of Estraya Parkway into those parcels. We're also interested in reducing traffic on Yuma in this area. It could be to provide some parking, some on-street parking for some of this commercial that will occur here, because it won't just be the residents that are using that commercial, some people from the park can come over here and, you know, after they've played a game, go over here and have some lunch or something. People from City Hall and from the library can also use some of these commercial uses, so we want to make it easy for travel to occur here. And another reason why we'd like to reduce the traffic is the Maricopa Trail, which is a trail that's going to exist all over the county, connecting really unique areas, is going to go right along the south side of Yuma. So, you know, let, let's make that work. Let's, let's slow down traffic, make it more pedestrian oriented, let's make it work. And then, the highlight is, this Maricopa Trail is going to go right over to the Bullard Wash. And that's, that's what we would suggest that city resources be devoted to, is improving this area of the Bullard Wash. We did a great job up by Estraya Falls, but, but this is an area that we think should really be worked on. And, and it could really become an amenity. And, you know, for these people, you know, starting with them right there, they're going to need someplace to just get outside and get some fresh air. They're going to be in a high-density development, and they just want to be able to get out, be out in the open. They could have someplace to run along this developed Bullard Wash. We were even thinking, because our dog park right now is south of MC85, wouldn't it be cool to have a linear dog park here along the Wash for, for these residents? And then, once, once that activity is happening there from the people who live immediately here, other people in the city are going to see that happening. And, you know, the Estraya Vista people are going to come over there, because they can use this Maricopa Trail. People from Centerra are going to go there, because they can see all this happening. And then again, with more people, we're thinking that some small businesses will come in to this area of the Bullard Wash. And, you know, it may start out with food trucks, but that's fine, that's cool, it's, you know, you're going to have a lot of people in the area, they're going to be doing activities, they're going to be hungry, and, you know, food trucks can be a cool, cool thing. And they can be developed attractively, and it can, it can serve community needs. And then think, too, you know, all the city workers who work at the development complexes and who work at the ballpark, wouldn't that be cool for them to go up here and have lunch? And then another small business that we thought might develop along here is rent a bike. You know, some, some guy can come in with a whole bunch of bikes, and you, you pay him a few bucks, and for a couple hours, you're riding your bike up and down this incredibly beautiful developed Bullard Wash. And then, again, more activity is just going to bring in more people. And once you get even more people, then maybe some of those food trucks will transition to brick and mortar, small businesses, small cafes. And then, you know, you've got all this activity, you've got businesses, you've got food, you've got activities. We're thinking that this could be our own Goodyear River Walk. Forget San Antonio, we got it here in Goodyear. It's going to be a little dry, but, you know, you know, it's... We're, we're looking for that activity, we're looking for the people, we're looking for businesses feeding off of those people in that activity, and, and we think it could happen here. And then also, let's take advantage of the proximity to the airport that Joe mentioned. I, I anticipate that there's probably going to be people that are going to come here and hang out in the River Walk, just because they want to watch planes take off and land. I think there's some people who, who thoroughly enjoy that, and they will, they'll come there and they'll hang out. Well, and if they're there just looking at the planes, let's, let's provide entertainment.
Oh, I also want one of those.
Well, you know, we've got the connection with the airport, we've got the connection with Aeroturbine, there's 40 million planes sitting over there, let, let's make something out of them, or let's get Aeroturbine to, to make something out of them for us. You know, and, and part of our River Walk that's going to make us different than San Antonio is going to have a plane park. You know, how cool is that? And, yeah, look at this, this restaurant concept that we found. They, they have taken an old airplane and they've turned it into a restaurant, and let's do it, let's do it. We've got all this right there.
I want to get even in there.
And then, now, now imagine with us here, because this is what we're doing.
It is.
When all this gets going, all this, all these people are here, all this activity happens, the CEO of Microsoft is going to call Michelle. Right? And he's going, he's, he's going to, he's going to want... Yes, definitely. And, you know, he says to her, I'm looking to develop an office in the southwest, and, you know, we've been studying, and we're thinking somewhere's in the Phoenix area, but I've heard these great things about Goodyear. You know, I'd really like to come check out Goodyear. And so Michelle's going to say, well, fly your private jet right into our airport, come on down. And so then he gets here, and you guys are going to take him out to the Goodyear River Walk. You're going to show him around, because this is a phenomenal amenity you've created. So you're going to, you're going to take ownership of it and show him around. And what, what he's going to see, being the businessman he is, in his mind's eye, he's going to see places for his employees to eat lunch, and he's going to see places for outdoor meetings, and he's going to see in places for his employees to run and ride bikes, and he's going to see places for his employees to do outdoor yoga, make them all mellow, make them all happy employees. And then, yeah, yeah, there you go, there you go. And so, when he sees all this that you've created, he's going to know he's found a place to put his Southwest office, and he's going to put it here. And when you get Microsoft, you can get anybody else you want. It's that easy, yep. It's that easy, it's that easy. But really, you know, it's, our, our point is, we have the ability to create a tremendous amenity. But that amenity that you can create for your residents, it can also be an incredible economic development driver. You know, Mr. Microsoft can go out to Buckeye, he's not going to find this. He's going to go over to Avondale, he's not going to find this. But they'll find it here.
And I just have to add on that, I mean, I was so excited when, in our advance, when we started talking about this, because I truly think this is something that has not been done definitely in the West Valley before. We've heard a little bit about this in maybe some other areas of the country, but, I mean, truly using our parks and open spaces as an economic catalyst, because some of those pictures you just saw go through are actually pictures of Silicon Valley. So it's, let's not look at other parks for our inspiration of what at least this segment of Bullard Wash could be, but what is it that these corporations want? Because they are spending a lot of money in these areas building outdoor open spaces. What is it that they're building so that we can build it to attract businesses? And something, I know Karen talked a lot about, too, is, you know, the, the other practical matter with pushing the Bullard Wash forward is that often developers are used to investing in streets and roadways. So if they come to this area and we say, well, you have to build your half-street of Bullard Avenue, yep, we figured. But if they come and we say, well, we need you to invest in the Bullard Wash, they're going to be, you know, that, that's a little more unusual. So it makes sense for maybe the city to make the upfront investment in Bullard Wash, and some of the other, you know, more traditional thought of infrastructure would be up to the developer. But there's just a lot of exciting opportunities for our open space, just doing something completely different and looking at it in a new way.
So are we open to the council now? Is that where you're at? Okay, who would like to be first? Yes, Bill?
Just got to, how does this, this seems to be in direct competition with the Basins and the Basin Park concept that we just went through. So, talk about, I mean...
Just got to, how does this, this seems to be in direct competition with the basins and the Basin Park concept that we just went through. So, talk about, I mean, before, I realize they're completely different areas and they're designed for completely different places, but they're actually in competition for the same dollars. So how do we overcome that?
Great question. And, you know, I'm not looking back at our Parks Director, so this is me talking from a planning perspective. But, yeah, I mean, from the planning perspective again, I really think that, again, if we look at other great cities, they're going to have different types of parks. And, you know, the Wellness Park, the Basin Park, has this amazing opportunity for these partnerships with private entities, looking maybe for some funds in that way. Luckily, we were able to get the land very cheap with our partnership with McFlood, and that's really this opportunity for a park for, you know, it's right on I-10 to introduce ourselves to everyone else. You know, "Welcome to Goodyear, this is our outward park." Where this park here, that's always been next to our city center, it's, you know, it's hugged by the community, it's our park. And, you know, to be honest, a lot of that is probably going to see more traditional financing, you know, more development impact fee financing, because it's our community park. The Bullard Wash is something even different there. Now, that is something where, I mean, what we would talk about with our next steps is, it's probably going to take some really deep diving into, okay, how much would a Phase 1 in this area cost? What CIP projects would maybe need to get rearranged for that? What type of financing would be available, for sure? This was a planning exercise, so we didn't get into that, but we completely understand that Bullard Wash is going to be a, if we, and by "we" I mean you, since you make the financial decisions, were really serious about it, there would probably have to be some juggling of CIP projects.
And I, there's definitely a diff, those three areas are distinctly different and desperately needed, so there's no, I don't think there's any doubt about that. And the park area, we've already kind of been, we've got it programmed, so it's already starting to move its way through the CIP process. So we can almost take that one out of the discussion, if you will. So now it's, how do we improve this Bullard Wash area right now? And much like the Bullard Avenue discussion, until we get the property owners to sign off or to be part of that discussion, I think the concept is awesome, and I'm very, you know, very excited about it. I love the idea of the planes, and, you know, what a, what a great way to, you know, the opening to, I'm sorry, the Western, I don't know what we're calling it, but the Western entrance to the airport. What a cool thing to have an airplane, maybe not buried in the dirt, but, you know, but some, something that says, "Hey, welcome to the airport." You know, "We don't want the tail sticking out of the ground," kind of a thing. Yeah, but that's a really, you know, those are neat concepts, and, you know, and I think getting, getting the development community to understand that we're open, we are open to, I don't want to say any crazy idea, because you guys didn't just sit around and, you know, have drinks all afternoon and say, "What can we, what's the craziest thing we can do?" But to get that message out with both this and the presentation from before, say, "Hey, we're open to any idea, and you bring it, we'll fix the zoning, we'll create a special P, whatever it, whatever it's going to take, we'll do that for you." I think is, is the message I hope that you're trying to send, and I think as a council member, certainly a message that we want to, that we want to project out there. So, again, good, good work.
And that's exactly right, because Sun MP does have all these existing entitlements that they've had them for almost 10 years, and nothing has happened. But what Sun MP is interested in is having a marketable plan that they can sell to developers. So, you know, that's why they've been sitting here on these office plans forever. It's not marketable in this area. The high-density residential is, but if they still block it, "Oh, we went through the whole process and we paid all those fees," we'll tell them, "We'll do this for you. We'll write the ordinance language, we'll advertise the public hearings, we'll take it through the process for you." So, yeah, that's how we, we understand that we're affecting some existing entitlements, but I think if they can meet their goal of selling their property sooner and getting it developed, I think they'll be fine with that.
I don't fear you're going to get in trouble from them. They didn't like it in the first place.
Well, there you go.
All right, I was in on those meetings. And they didn't like the control, and the reason we did it was to control them. I have to tell you, that was the theory or the philosophy back then, so that we would have the hand on what they were going to do. And I think they'll be very pleased, because I can remember them coming back from time to time wanting, you know, the housing was in this one, in that one quadrant, and they wanted to put dry cleaner in it, and they wanted to put a little drugstore in it, and they wanted to do some things. And of course, it wasn't received as well as it could have been. So I really can see it, and you know there's not going to be a movie theater on that one quadrant, that's what they had to build, is a movie theater on that quadrant. So, I mean, they really had exact directions on what they were going to build. And that sort of turned them off in many ways, and I can understand that. So, I, you know, I think that it is exciting, it is interesting. And again, it'd be nice, again, to sit down with them, you know, okay? And so that our dialogue with them and the things we talk about when we talk about Sun MP, they're positive, and that anything back then, whatever, is gone. This is a new day, a new light, a new language. And I think it'd be really good, and it's really interesting. Remember the group of businessmen that came together on Bullard across from the airport? Remember all the high-rises and the office buildings and the whole thing? They really got excited that they had the ability to, you know, to design something like that. So I think, in my view, I think you're going to get a lot of cooperation on this. And I like the idea of just finally just, dude, finish the park up. Finish the park and the recreation would be really nice for that side of town, so. I spoke first, sorry, but once in a while I really can't stand it. Okay, Joe?
No, I like the, yeah, I like the free flow of the information and ideas. I think, just to piggyback on what Councilmember Stip mentioned, is to sit down with developers and try to get some buy-in on the vision, especially on Bullard. And I think I've shared that before, is we've got a vision of what we'd like to see there on Bullard, but we want to make sure that the developers share that vision or are going to come along before you get too far out in front. So I think having that discussion with them would be really important, and showing the city as a meaningful to, you know, coming up with some ideas that'll help spur on development in that area. But no, I like the idea of kind of thinking, you know, sort of outside the box a little bit. I've been big on gathering places, trying to find a place to, you know, where we can go. And I like the park idea that you really have over that side there, because I really believe that center part of town, and that's what's really lacking, is a really, really good park. You know, I mean, now with the little ones, you know, Avondale, their sports complex that they have over there, try to get in there on a weekend.
You can't.
You can't. It's packed. Every field is taken, every soccer field is taken, they have basketball and volley, they got everything kind of going there as a gathering place. And again, ours may not be exactly, but my point I'm making though is, that center part of town would be a perfect place to start working on some of those facilities that we're lacking. So, again, I like your thought process here.
Just quickly to interject that, it probably, it might speed up the Hudson project.
Could very well.
I think I mentioned to someone from that group just recently about, "Oh, well, we're probably going to do a park there." "Is you going to do a park there?" And I said, "Yes, come back right up to your property." So maybe, you know, that will be something that will help. Next. Carolyn? Oh, Sherry?
First of all, I, again, I'm just very excited that you guys thought of such fun and interesting things. Could you send us those pictures of the planes? I really do like that. Well, when you look at playgrounds as art, you know, you're talking about, when you go to Seattle, right by the Space Needle, there's this huge, huge, it's art, but it's a playground that adults are crawling on, something like that, you're going to, it's going to be like, like the train park, you're going to have people coming to our city because it's not just a tot lot. They're going to come for that.
Thank you for mentioning the train. You thought we forgot about it, I know you did.
I would love to have a train.
Trains and planes.
Trains and planes.
And that's something too, because that brings people when they have those destinations. I think that's great. The idea of the bikes are great. You know, this is the place, I've seen them in other parts of the different towns where they're not really placed in good spots, but a park, a linear, I can see people actually using them there. So I think you have a lot of really good ideas, and I'm okay to change stuff. What we had back, you know, 12 years ago, it's not selling now. I think we know that. So I am very okay with this, let's look for something eclectic, let's look for something that's fun, that we can bring people in and make that investment to bring more businesses here. Because you talk about Microsoft, there is, I mean, you were kind of half kidding, but when you look at Google, Microsoft and their campuses, they have Bring Your Dog to Work. They have very, kind of what you might not think is standard policies, but they build campuses, they don't build office buildings. They're not looking for the three-story office building, they're looking for a campus type. And so if we want to get those young millennials, there was an article in the paper about millennials and some of those new startups, they're not all the big Googles, but the younger generation that's looking for those startups are looking for niche districts, that's what they're looking for. And I think we can really start attracting maybe, maybe not Google, maybe the next Google type of thing. So I think you've got a lot of insight, and, and I'll seriously do send those pictures, I love those.
You know, and a lot of the millennials who we anticipate will be living here, they don't get cars anymore.
Yeah.
So how convenient that we could have businesses here that they can ride their bike to, that they can walk to, and the businesses would love to have them as their employees, I think, so.
And, I mean, even the pictures of the bikes we showed you were actually the Facebook and the Google Bikes. So, I mean, again, you can just take this so far of, you know, I mean, Phoenix is doing some cool things with their bike rental, but CTC is the first person who's come to me who said, "We would love to have bikes." So what, why don't we have Goodyear CTC colored bikes with their symbol, you know? Get our businesses out there again, and really use everything we can to build this reputation of, you know, our high-quality business.
Next, Wally?
I think if we do work on the Bullard Wash and we tie it in with the Bullard Wash up by Estrella Falls, I don't see a lot of activity there. So I'm hoping, in fact, I don't see any activity there, but then I'm not on it. I drive by it and I never see anyone down there. And I would hope that we can tie them together so that, I don't know if we would go under the freeway, if we, you know...
It's there.
It's already there, so we could just tie them together and then keep doing what we're doing there, I would assume, so that it's got some continuity on it.
And actually, if you walk under there, you'll see the bridges has some sculptures underneath there, they're all built in, as I remember.
Yeah, I forgot about that, you're right, yeah. But it's an interesting concept. Now, I don't know, I don't know how a developer could say no if he is told, "We are willing to negotiate, we're willing to change what we said before, and we want to make it work." I'm hoping that they'll be very receptive to that, because I think sometimes staff hears what we say, and then they know what our rules are, our design guidelines, and there's no room for compromise. But, you know, we're willing to do whatever it takes to develop that part of Goodyear. We would like to see something. Absolutely nothing has been done other than our, than the school. So it's to our advantage, and I think that's why we were so insistent on getting the water agreements done with West Goodyear is because we want development out there. And the more development, the more money in our pocket, money for our city. So I think it's kind of exciting.
Carolyn?
Well, I'm just really excited to have this discussion. From what I'm hearing, is that we have seven people on the council who are of one mind about this, that we would love to support something like this and actually make it pragmatic and feasible. And I think that's very exciting. I commend the department for taking this extraordinary step, and I've been following Goodyear for a whole lot of years, and I think this is the first time I felt this excitement and creativity at the table. So it's very exciting to me to be able to participate in this discussion. You're great.
Gwen?
Thank you. Well, fabulous. And, you know, looking at that and your vision, and I know your story, your creativity to it, but it's great, because really what you've done is you've taken areas, either around the valley or around the nation, some hotspots, and you've brought it into one central region. And so I think that that's terrific, because you are hitting on things that are important to people. You know, I'm thrilled about this corner, I mean, the park that we've been promising Central Goodyear forever is finally coming to fruition, and I'm thrilled. Two questions, I don't know what PO stands for.
Post Office.
Oh, thank you. And I couldn't think what it was. Okay. And what did you say the size there was for the university section? What is, with the City Hall, Library, Universities, what, what's the acreage right there?
It's about 30 acres.
About 30?
Yeah, once you take out the streets and stuff, it narrows it down to about 30 acres.
What does it narrow down for the universities, since you still have the library and City Hall there? Do you estimate?
We don't have, we don't have exact figures on that.
Okay.
That's something we'd have to develop.
Okay, okay. I'm just asking just because of thinking of the previous universities that had thought they would come to Goodyear, they were both looking for like 15 acres, I want to say, was roughly, 15 or 30. So that's why I was asking, what's, what size is there?
I think the City Hall, when we were doing the site planning, had a pretty small footprint, and I can't imagine the libraries would be very different than City Hall.
No, no.
So I think that there would be at least 20, 25 acres.
Oh, certainly, they certainly are. I agree. But I'm just, you know, out of curiosity, what you kind of plotted there. I think the Wash is outstanding. I think that, as Wally pointed out, it definitely needs to connect with the north of the freeway. I think that making that a nice loop going, as you've described, for people to be able to take will be outstanding. The density's good, I'm assuming that CSW, because that had other, did that have office and residential and commercial? I forget what was all...
It was part of the Wood Corporate Campus P A D.
Right, okay.
And it was mid and high-rise office buildings down there.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, so they want to switch it to all residential.
They want to switch it to all residential, okay. And, you know, Sherry and I were looking at each other, the planes are terrific. Well, I remember, we both remember growing up with Metro Center, there was, inside of Metro Center, there was a restaurant that was the side of a plane. You looked like you were going in, and it overlooked onto the ice skating rink. And so, I mean, that was, it was a cool thing at that time. And so, you know, there is a lot of enjoyment with unique items, and that's what we're looking for. And so, you know, great, great imaginations, great creativity. There again, getting with our developers and sharing that idea and getting them, you know, to visualize what you're talking about with you, I think is, you know, going to be the good thing. And I wish I, I wish one of you would say, "There's a grant for that." I think that's the only thing that just breaks my heart, where's the money coming from? You know, where's, you know, but it certainly, as Sharon said, I think we're all, we all want something here, and we're ready for that, we've been ready for that. And so, starting today with bringing this to us and us talking about it, getting, getting that energy and momentum, I think it's time to do that. I think we're at that, that time. So thanks.
Oh, yes, Carolyn?
I just neglected to make one other comment, and that was, I don't want the train to get lost in this discussion, and I know, thank you very much, Sherry, but I just didn't want my support of that to go unstated.
Thank you, because I was going to mention something of that, because we all have worked towards that, and absolutely.
There was a movie, Plane, Train, and Automobile. Joe would love it 24 hours being, you know, going, going in and out.
So, Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead, Wally.
Is it in your discussions, have you discussed about the city putting in any infrastructure to spur the growth there? Or are you leaving it all up to the developers to do it? Sorry, Brian, but I just think it's, I just think it's a question that needs to be asked, because we may, as a city, need to do something to get it off the ground.
Well, that's what we're thinking, that the city's focus in terms of our resources should be on the Wash. Because as Katie said, when we say to a, a business entity, you know, we need you to improve the street frontage where you wanna build, they get that, they understand that, they can take that back to their stockholders, it's, it's a normal business expense. So we think that there are other opportunities to get Bullard Avenue built through the development community, through the business community, and that would hopefully free up some money for us to do this. We see this as being our big investment. You know, we may need to do some things here in terms of slowing down traffic on Yuma and, and making some areas a little more pedestrian to get to there, but this is probably where our big, our big resource push should be.
And again, there may be some opportunities, I mean, just like with West Goodyear and what you've been encouraging us to do, to talk to the development of community, because I can never remember the name of the road, but we had a developer just put in the road right next to us, 100...
143rd.
143rd.
It was awesome.
Developers are willing to make investments, and that's where maybe there's some, you know, if we can, hey, you know, we'll initiate a rezoning to allow you to do X, Y, Z if you can make the investment over here. You just never know until we start having those conversations, maybe, maybe there are creative ways to get some of this infrastructure done, so.
Well, I had the opportunity to go to San Francisco, Michelle Laurie and GPEC this week, and one of the highlights was touring Google. Now, actually, what you've said tonight, and, and the different components you're trying, the excitement and the difference, really different and different, is exactly what the building is. They reach out to their employees and they find out their personality and what kind of room they're comfortable in, what colors they're comfortable in, do they like lights or do they like, they have a home or, of what they like. So you walk down the hall, and so you have the one that's a person that's studious, kind of that type, and they like, they don't like a lot of light, and they like that letter look and book, and they like to be all cozy, where you open up this and there's a couch there, and it's got, you know, like books on the thing. And so they go on to another one, and it's where they like color and flash, and that's it. The dining, the dining rooms, and they have a lot of little kind of cafes all over. There was so much information, there's just no way that one could explain that unless you walk through that. And really, don't you think, Michelle, that the things they've done tonight and brought to us, is Google, is, is in a sense, that kind of thinking, that reaching to people and, and their inner feelings and what they're comfortable in, and something for everybody?
That part is all about attraction.
Yeah.
That was all about the...
And, and, and that may do, the entrepreneur, the young, you know, well, might be an attraction to them now, when they see a city that's going to be so, you know, creative and right on. And so I, I'm really excited, it's, it's...
Right on, baby.
Right on. And I wanna thank staff, because it's gotta be very, very difficult to go behind closed doors and try to figure out what the council would like, you know? Because they hear us at different times, a kind of, you come with ideas, we kinda push them back, and then we say something, we want this, and you do it, and you brought it before, it says, oh, no, no, we don't want that. So, tonight was pretty extraordinary, and presentations were really good, and I can, I got a sense if they really looked into this. I mean, now there's gonna be more depth to it, because it's going to take some, some changes, you know? But I gather, everybody around this table, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
So, so boy, do a quick dance step and you've got it.
They did.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna applaud you.
I just, again, and I know on behalf of Christopher and myself, just wanted to thank you guys for, you know, I know we squished around the table, appreciate just letting us try something different. And just to give you a little synopsis of the next step, so, and we were hearing that you are okay with this, of maybe start planning some type of West Goodyear charrette, and yeah, it wouldn't be the production that the city center one was, you know, we hope we showed you that, you know, we can do a lot of this too with assistance.
And you should be able to run it, we shouldn't have to hire another company to come in.
Right. So we can start having these conversations with them, kinda maybe doing something, maybe not a charrette, but, you know, starting to reach out to the players in the city center area to talk to them about, you know, what can we do? And then, of course, the hard task of, you know, looking at the CIP and, you know, okay, what, what is the reality of, you know, some of these things?
We can start some more.
Yeah.
Can y'all let us know how it's going?
Absolutely, you know, we'll, I think we'll talk more, but we'll probably need to come up with some kind of project plan, and certainly, we're not going to leave this table and, and not come back to you until we have something. I mean, if we are planning charrettes, we'll figure out how to get you to be a part of those and touch base with you.
And please, don't make this something that goes on a shelf and we never see again.
No. And hopefully, as you reach out to the public and reach out to the businesses and developers, they may get excited and, and you might find something happening, opportunities present themselves before us, so. Well, great, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I just let you know that the future meetings, on 6/27 is a CFD meeting at 5:00, and then a regular meeting following that, 6:00, and then on 7/11 is a work session at 5:00 and a regular meeting. So I'm going to adjourn this, and then we're going to, of course, go into our special meeting agenda. So, what, 10 minutes is enough? Can you break? Okay, yeah.
Start the meeting.
Start the meeting and take a break?
Stop the next one.
Okay, if you want to do that, that just means we're...
I'll tell you.
Do you want me to start the meeting and go into the...
It's not going to be a whole meeting, we'll take the whole...
Okay, all right, all right, well, it works.